Good evening, everyone. I'm showing five o'clock. I would like to call the meeting to order. Welcome everybody to this October 19th joint meeting of the West Turlock Sub Basin and the East Turlock Sub Basin Groundwater Sustainability Agency Board of Directors. For the West Turlock GSA Board, I now call this meeting to order at five o'clock. I think Vice Chair Pereira is going to call the meeting order for the East side.
Okay, this is Vice Chair Pereira, and I'll call the meeting to order for the East side at 5:01.
Thank you, Lloyd.
Welcome.
On-going COVID-19 pandemic and pursuant to Assembly Bill 361, signed into law September the 16th, 2021. This meeting is being held by conference call without a physical meeting location. This meeting was noticed in accordance with the Brown Act. In addition to a physical posting of the agenda at 333 East Canal Drive, the meeting was noticed online and emailed to sub-basin's interested party list. This joint meeting is being recorded and will be posted online. The board secretaries are taking minutes as well. Materials are available at turlockgroundwater.org. The GSA's encourage public participation during the special meeting. We'll receive public comment during the public comment period. Portion of the agenda and during specific items, feel free to use the raise hand feature on the Zoom platform if you like, or press star nine on your phone if you are calling in. The GSA boards will be receiving a presentation on draft chapters six and seven of the groundwater sustainability plan. Following the presentation, the boards may act to release that chapter for public comment. Be clear, the boards are not finalizing GSP in full or in part, but rather simply releasing chapters to formally begin the public review of these chapters. With that, let's get the meeting started. The board member roll call. Followed by participant identification list. Ms. Land, can you call the roll, please?
Thank you very much, Chair Alamo. Director Alvarez?
Here.
Director Buck? Director Buck? Alternate Director Rush? Director Chiesa? Director Chiesa? Director Espinoza? Director Espinoza? Director Larson?
Present.
Director Lopez? Alternate Director Silveira?
Here.
Director Maldonado?
Present.
Director Odom?
Here, but I will have to log off for another meeting at 6:00 PM.
Thank you very much. Vice Chair Juritzma?
I'm here.
And Chair Alamo?
Present.
Thank you very much. We do have a quorum of the West Turlock Sub Basin GSA Board.
Okay, Ms. Johnson, would you please call the roll for the East Turlock Sub Basin GSA?
Sure. Um, okay, how about Director Chiesa?
Well, Ward is here for the East for Vito Chiesa.
Thank you, Director Ward. Director Ulrich? Director Ulrich's present? Okay, how about alternate Director Yatsuya? Okay. Director Eltal? Director Eltal? Chair Russini, I believe he is out today. Do we have alternate Director Ward Burroughs? Okay, Vice Chair Perea?
Present.
Okay, this time it looks like we only have two of the three required board members for the EPS GSA, unless I missed any of the directors or alternate. Um.
Sorry, Jessica, this is Julian Phillips. By my count, I have three. We have Vice Chair Pereira. Oh, I'm sorry, I counted member Eltal. Was that him on the line by chance?
I understand he should be calling in at any minute. But he currently not present. We can wait a little while, or we can try and call the roll a little bit later.
Thanks for clarifying that, Jessica.
Okay, let's go ahead and move forward a little bit then, and let's see if there's any participants that want to voluntarily identify themselves now.
Mike Buck has entered.
And Mr. Chair Vito Chiesa is on now.
Thank you, Jennifer. Can you make those changes?
Thank you, Chair Alamo. We'll update the record to reflect that Director Buck and Director Chiesa have joined the meeting.
Thank you. Okay. Did you want to go back? Lloyd and finish that up? Are you still waiting for one call?
Yeah, I just spoke to Dirk and he's logging in.
Perfect.
So we could probably just go through the rest of the guests and then hopefully he'll be on by the time we get done.
Perfect. Is there any other guests who want to identify themselves at this time?
This is Rhett Calkins, farmer in Turlock Irrigation District.
Thank you, Rhett.
And Kevin Kaufman's online former coordinator.
Dirk Ulrich is online.
Hi Dirk.
Hello.
Thanks, Dirk. This is Jessica Johnson. So it looks like we now have a quorum for the East Turlock GSA Board. If you.
Hello?
Go ahead, we can hear you.
Hello, this is Isham in case you were taken. Who's present?
Hello?
Go ahead, I see your hand raised. Go ahead.
Oh, yes. Joseph Castillo, resident from Delhi, California. Guest.
Thank you, Joseph. Okay, here are no other actions there. We'll move on to the the approval of the minutes. Go ahead.
I just want to report, I just want to report that this is Isham Mattel, member of the East Turlock GSA. Want to report that I just joined in.
Thank you. Here are no further. We'll move on to our approval of minutes of the August 30th, 2021 special joint meeting of the West and East. I'll be entertaining a motion at this time for the approval of that from the West Turlock.
So moved, Juritzma?
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Chiesa.
Thank you, Vito. Problem moving, is there any further comments or questions or changes to the minutes? Here are none, please say aye.
Aye.
Right.
Right.
Pose, same time, please. Motion for the minutes passed. Thank you. Interested persons in the audience are welcome to introduce any topic within the agency's jurisdiction. No action may be undertaken on any item not appearing on a posted agenda, except that the boards may briefly respond, post it on, refer the matter to staff or request that we place it on a future agenda. Is there any public comment?
This is Rhett Calkins. I have a comment.
Go ahead, Rhett.
For for the history of TID, TID has been importing service water to the Turlock Basin, and that has been in excess of what TID has pumped. So there should be a significant reservoir of water that pumps to the Turlock Irrigation District. And TID refers to that as, you know, conjunctive use water, and that water is available to the TID farmers. When we have drought periods, periods of drought, we also may have somewhat of an artificial drought put onto us by the state of California on top of the drought. So there should be a fair amount of water in that reservoir beneath our feet available for us to survive for some period of time. But all the discussions that I have heard in the groundwater meetings refer to this out of balance condition that we have as a problem that seems to be understood existing across the West GSA and the East GSA, and it's shared 100,000 acre foot deficit per year of pumping instead of depositing water. But when you look at just the west side, TID deposits more for the west side than west side pumps. So we should have water accounting done that shows how much water is the west side's water and how much water is the east side's water? And that's my comment.
Thank you, Rhett, for those comments. Is there any other further comments? There are none. We'll proceed with our staff updates. First up is our budget update. Michael. Michael Clipper?
Good evening, everyone. For the basin, Herb, can you, yeah, thank you. There was very little activity in September, just how the invoices were paid and cashed. We started the month with $944,939.99. Ended the, ended the month with $944,874.81. Going, so that's all the next slide, this shows what we've done year-to-date activity. So at the bottom, so total expenditures for this year so far is $215,414.13. Any questions? This is for the East and West communal funds.
Any other questions or comments? Here are none. We'll proceed to our public outreach update. Herb?
One second. I am, my video is a little, a little off, so I'm just going to quickly just give the three things that I have listed here for bandwidth purposes. We have, as you seen on the pre-slides, that we have an October 28th groundwater lunch hour. Actually, sorry, they used to be groundwater lunch hours. This one is going to be a groundwater office hours. We're holding them on October 28th from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. And we're going to cover pending action of these boards tonight. You know, releasing chapters six and seven of the draft groundwater sustainability plan. We'll cover those topics or those components, and if not, we'll cover them at high level regardless, and talk a little bit about activities that are going on. And so that is going to be the topic of the October 28th groundwater office hours. We're moving them to six o'clock in the evening to accommodate for people who might not be able to have participated at the lunchtime hour. Also, work on chapter three, which is the notice and communication chapter. It continues. And we're working on, on getting that out to the, the public, going through the process to get out there, and we see that coming in the next month or so. So that's a good sign. Although some of the items for the outreach will have to update when the comprehensive GSP gets put together, because some of the numbers for meetings and other things continue to add up as we move along. So we'll have to update that at the end of the day as well. But we'll get a first draft out there for public input. And then we're looking at the option of having some in-person discussions with the public in November and December. And I would just say that those are brewing, and stay tuned for more on that. So that's it as far as a public outreach update unless there are any additional questions. And we continue to update our website at turlockgroundwater.org, and then we have a pretty robust GSP page as well on there for people to, to download chapters that are available and to, to comment on chapters and also see comments that have already been submitted by stakeholders as well. And so pending action of these two bodies tonight, we will have two new chapters up there at the end of this meeting. But that is my update.
Thank you for that update. Any questions or comments? Here are none. We'll proceed with our agenda items. First up is a resolution of the West Turlock Sub Basin Groundwater Sustainability Agency Board of Directors, recognizing the state of emergency proclaimed by the governor on March 4th, which remains in effect and authorizes remote teleconference meetings of the West Turlock Sub Basin GSA Board for the period of October 19th through November 18th, 2021. Valerie? Valerie on?
Chair Alamo, Valerie is not on right now, so let me cover this for you. As most of you know, I'm involved with public agencies. The, well, the state legislation originally giving boards like yourselves the opportunity to remote and teleconference meetings has expired. A new legislation did pass, AB 361. Does allow you to continue to do that, but on a month-to-month basis. So you're allowed to adopt a resolution allowing teleconferencing for Brown Act-type meetings as long as you renew that resolution every 30 days. And so staff recommendation that you adopt this resolution allows us to continue these remote meetings for now, which we have very well attended, very effective for our public outreach. And so again, the West Turlock adopted this resolution allowing for continued teleconferencing as long as the governor has a state of emergency in effect. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Here are no questions. I'd entertain a motion at this time for this resolution.
So moved.
Thank you, Nicole. Is there a second?
I will second.
I think I got Miguel as a second. Is there any other comments or questions or concerns on this resolution? If not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair Alamo, my apologies for interrupting you. With this being a resolution, we would like to go ahead and do a roll call vote of the West Turlock Sub Basin Board, if you're okay with that.
Sure, go ahead, Jennifer.
Very good. Thank you so much. Director Alvarez?
Yes.
Director Buck?
Hi, yes.
Director Chiesa?
Yes.
Director Larson?
Yes.
Director Maldonado?
Yes.
Director Odom?
Yes.
Alternate Director Silveira?
Yes.
Vice Chair Juritzma?
Yes.
And Chair Alamo?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Chair.
With that, a resolution passes, and I'll pass it on to Vice Chair Pereira for his resolution.
Thank you. This is for the East Turlock Sub Basin Groundwater Sustainability Agency, and it's a resolution proclaiming a local emergency ratifying the proclamation of the state of emergency by in 1221 issued on August 16, 2021, and authorizing remote teleconferencing meetings of the East Turlock Sub Basin Groundwater Sustainability Agency for the period of October 19th, 2021 through November 18th, 2021 pursuant to the Brown Act provisions. Ms. Johnson, did you want to make comment? Are we ready for action?
I would just reiterate what Mr. Cook said. It was a great explanation. This resolution allows the board to continue holding remote meetings during the state-declared state of emergency due to COVID-19 as long as there are these findings that are in this resolution regarding the health and safety of attendees and the protection of those folks as a result of these virtual meetings. So I'm happy to take any other questions. Otherwise, we would recommend adopting this resolution.
Is there a motion to approve the East side or the East Turlock Sub Basin GSA resolution?
I'll make a motion.
Moved by Director Eltal?
I'll second. This is Dirk.
Seconded by Director Ulrich. Is there any further comment? Seeing none, Ms. Johnson, would you please call the roll?
Absolutely. Director Ulrich?
Yes.
Thank you. Director Eltal?
Hi.
You. Director Chiesa?
Well, Ward for Chiesa.
And your vote, Director Ward? Director Ward, did you, I'm sorry, I missed your vote on the resolution. Are you, are you still available, Director Ward?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. And Vice Chair Perea?
I vote yes.
Thank you. That unanimous motion passed. I'm going to look if I missed another director.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
With that, let's go ahead and move on to agenda item number three, groundwater sustainability plan, review of chapter six, sustainable management criteria, and chapter seven, monitoring networks. Willis?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Thank you Chairman Alamo, and thank you for the board's attention at once again to another PowerPoint on the GSP. This evening, we are evaluating, let's see if we can get this into slideshow mode here. This evening, we are reviewing the draft GSP chapters six and seven covering sustainable management criteria and monitoring networks. So let's just dive right into it. For the presentation tonight, I just have a brief slide kind of reminding us where we are with respect to the draft GSP chapters, and then diving into chapter six first and discussing the sustainable management criteria that's defined by Sigma and how they apply to the Turlock Sub Basin and what's been selected for the Turlock Sub Basin. Next, we'll move into the how the criteria have been monitored, which is more chapter seven. And I appreciate the ability to put both of these chapters into the same agenda item this evening because they are so related, and I think sometimes it's really helpful to understand the sustainable management criteria with respect to the monitoring network. So I'll be talking a little bit about both together. And then finally, at the end of the presentation, I'll just have a word or two about how the public review process has been working. So here are eight general chapter titles for your GSP, four of which you already have as draft chapters up on your website. And we have gone through a public comment period and review for that. Thanks to everyone who provided comments on those chapters. Tonight, we'll be looking at six and seven, as I mentioned, the sustainable management criteria and monitoring networks. And then Herb had mentioned previously in his update that he's working feverishly on the notice and communication chapter, and that it isn't going to be finished until the end. And so there is obviously continued stakeholder outreach and communication going on, and will continue right up to adoption and submittal of the GSP. But we do want to get some framework that's been developed already in front of everyone so they can just see how the process is being documented. So Herb is going to finalize that. He's working with all of the other people in the outreach committee and others in the ad hoc committee to get this in good shape, and we'll be providing that to the joint boards probably early to mid-November. And then at that time, we'll also be finishing up chapter eight and getting that out. Just as a quick overview of chapter eight, we're using that chapter to demonstrate the projects, the GSP projects that have been developed for the GSP. And the modeling has now been completed for that, those projects. And we presented that to the full TAC just recently, last, the last TAC meeting. And so we are now finalizing some of the wording on the management actions. We're doing that with the ad hoc committee, and there's a great group. It's very interactive, and we're getting a lot of excellent feedback. So shout out to the ad hoc committee for all of their input on all of this. It will be going to the full TAC soon and then coming to you, the joint boards, probably again early or mid-November. Diving into the sustainable management criteria, here's something that you've seen probably a lot before, but I thought it might be helpful to go through a couple of these slides to get us all on the same page. These are the six sustainability indicators that Sigma has defined, and if conditions for any of these are significant and reasonable, then they are defined as undesirable results. There is one right in the middle there, seawater intrusion. The TAC has looked at a lot of technical information and the regulations, and has determined that they do not think that the seawater intrusion indicator is applicable to this sub-basin, and they're going to be bringing a resolution along those lines for the GSA's approval as well. With respect to the other five, we have selected minimum thresholds, working with all of the TAC members and the public to quantify undesirable results for the sub-basin. We've also selected measurable objectives, which give you a target for more favorable conditions. So I thought I would begin by talking a little bit about some of the considerations in the Turlock Sub Basin that you've already seen some of the background on that are considerations for sustainability. And I've done that by highlighting the map of the Turlock Sub Basin with some of the little icons that you just saw for the six sustainability indicators. Everything except for seawater intrusion is shown somewhere on this map. This doesn't mean that, that there aren't conditions in wider areas or in other areas, but I've just tried to provide locations for some of these indicators just so you have a better understanding of sort of how the considerations have been put together for the sustainable management criteria. In the center of the basin and the eastern of the basin, we have overdraft conditions and declining water levels. So I've got the icons there for chronic lowering of water levels and reduction of groundwater and storage. We also have declining water levels in the, the sort of central northwestern portion of the basin where you can see a concentrated area of little dots. Those dots are impacts to domestic wells. About 165 wells failed in the basin from about 2013, 2014 up into the, the wetter conditions of 2017. And so they are a consideration for sustainability indicators, and they are shown on the map as well. We also have in the western sub-basin, a red striped area that I have put a couple of icons. There are two water quality icons, one for the city of Turlock and one for the city of Series. I'm not picking on those cities, but they have been two of the more vocal municipalities who have seen some changes in water quality in their wells and have provided that information to the technical team for consideration as we go through the sustainability indicators. So I've just highlighted those two areas. And then the red stripe area has a land subsidence icon, sort of right in the middle of it. And that indicates the potential for future land subsidence, an area probably more A an area probably more susceptible to land subsidence just because of the extent of the corcain clay. We've talked about that previously and I have a couple of slides tonight just to refresh our memories. And then finally, the river boundaries of the sub-basin are um can of a concern with respect to the interconnected surface water um icons that I've put there. Um, especially, we have seen projected increases in our analyses for stream flow depletion. Uh, more so on the Merced River than the Tuolumne or the San Joaquin, but all three are indicated there. And all three, of course, are considerations for the sustainable management criteria. Um, before we get into each one of these sustainable management criterias, uh criteria individually, uh, I thought I'd just sort of set the stage with a little, a few comments and a little bit of an approach here. Um, so according to Sigma, the GSAs are not required to address undesirable results that have occurred before and not corrected by January first, twenty fifteen. So with that in mind, we've really tried to select sustainable management criteria that eliminate current or future projected undesirable results. Um, there are some conditions in the sub-basin that we have now. And there's no obligation to uh go backwards in time and make them look as if uh it were, you know, some some decades uh in the past. But we're just trying to make sure that the GSA activities manage the basin in a responsible way and that there's no exacerbation of any of the conditions going forward. We recognize the need for adaptive management. I'm gonna highlight that in a couple of slides during this presentation. But just to set the stage, we have developed robust monitoring networks. Obviously, there will be improvements in those over time. We will analyze and document GSP implementation progress through annual reporting that's required. But it's also a wonderful way for the sub-basin to keep up with how things are going on an annual basis. Uh, we will note and respond to changing conditions as needed. And that's incorporated into the philosophy of 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 adaptive management as well as incorporated in some of our management actions. And then finally, um, we'll be reassessing the sustainable management criteria and the aqua- aquifer response to projects and management actions at the five-year valuation of the GSP. So with all of those things in mind and recognizing this is the first time that the sub-basin has selected any sustainable management criteria, um, we'll just go forward and give you a little background on how they were selected and what they have uh been determined to be. Beginning first with chronic lowering of water level, we've talked a bit about water level declines. We see that most of the declines associated in the eastern sub-basin where groundwater is primarily the uh sole source of water supply with respect to the agricultural operations in that area. With respect to overdraft conditions, we also see um overdraft conditions uh that have resulted in those water level declines. And we've looked in particular at future projected water budgets. Um, this is a monthly inflow and outflow of all of the components of a water budget over fifty years. So that's quite a a long planning horizon. So we recognize the uncertainty associated with that time period. For the historical period, we noted that there was a historical overdraft in the sub-basin of about sixty-four thousand acre feet a year. And then when we did the projected water budget modeling, we found that that actually improved over time. But it improved at the expense of increases in stream flow depletion, in particular, the Merced River. Say a little bit about that uh going forward here. Um, so the the, those increases that we um had analyzed were determined by the surface water rights holders as being undesirable results. So much of our sustainable management criteria is set in order to avoid those future projected stream flow depletions. With respect to water quality, we looked at the uh wide um availability of water quality from many, many programs and identified six constituents of concern. Constituents of concern in my mind just simply means elevated concentrations over a relatively widespread area, more than a few wells. Uh, in other words, through the sub-basin. Um, the GSAs are not responsible for this historical condition. Uh, Sigma says that the GSAs are responsible for degradation of water quality that results from their actions, including projects or management actions that are in their GSP. But also as well as the um authority that they have to manage water levels and groundwater extractions. So the um, the sustainable management criteria for this sub-basin has been put together in order to um prevent any of those actions from leading to degradation of water quality. And in order to determine if that's happening, um, this, the GSAs will need to track and analyze these COCs on an annual basis. Um, we can use water quality data monitored by others. You can see by the numerous, numerous dots on the map. At left, there are a variety of programs already in existence. And there's no need at this point that I can see for the GSAs to institute a separate and distinct water quality monitoring program. I think there's a tremendous amount of data being generated uh in the sub-basin that's widely available. And we certainly will want to rely on that and make best use of existing monitoring programs. And then using that information on an annual basis, determine whether or not the GSA actions are actually causing that degradation. And if so, how best to mitigate it, how best to work with the responsible agencies that that really have the primary responsibility for water quality um on options for going forward. So that's the approach that we've taken for water quality. The approach for land subsidence, um, we've said this over and over again and and I just start out with it here. Uh, this is just a map showing some of the historical land subsidence, which is primarily to the south of the Turlock Sub Basin. There's been no documented impacts at all in this uh sub-basin from land subsidence. However, the impacts to the south are primarily resulting from compressible clay layers within and below the corcain clay. And as water levels decline in those areas, some of those compressible clays can compact in the subsurface. And that can lead avoid and allow for the ground surface to subside. That corcain clay and the compressible clays that are below it extend up into the western portions of the Turlock Sub Basin. That was that red striped area that we looked at previously on the map uh with respect to land subsidence. And as a result of that, we're going to need to manage groundwater levels to make sure that we don't exacerbate any um uh land subsidence that may, that we may be at risk for in the future. In particular, uh, we are going to actually set our MTs at historic lows. And I'm just moving to this uh INSAR data that we see here. The um sending the MTs at or above the historic low water levels as a proxy for rate of subsidence provides a couple of things that are helpful from a a technical standpoint. Um, you can look at this uh INSAR data and you can see various rates of subsidence as indicated by the color ramping across the sub-basin. But overall, these rates are incredibly low. Some of them are close to the um uh uncertainty and error bars associated with the data themselves. And as a result of that, it's very difficult to select a rate of subsidence that would actually lead to undesirable results since the sub-basin really hasn't experienced anything. And so as a result of not being able to select a rate, um, we're gonna use those INSAR data for annual screening to help us better understand uh maybe local areas that might be more susceptible to uh land subsidence perhaps than we even thought. And we might use those data uh to uh better understand and inform what's happening over time and adjust the monitoring program as needed. I think it's gonna take some time before we really see whether or not some of the indicated uh vertical displacement, which is what these maps are measuring, is is truly uh land subsidence or rather some other um soil uh condition uh wetting from irrigation, for example, will result in vertical displacement. And so we're just trying to make sure that we better understand the sub-basin going forward and adding this light land subsided screening to the monitoring program, I think is a reasonable way to do that. And then finally, our last inter- in our last um sustainability indicator, interconnected surface water. You've seen our little cartoons, I'm sure, in the past, and I always put them up because I just think it's a quick visual to remind us that there's a gaining stream and meaning that the stage in the river is higher than the groundwater. Uh, I'm I'm sorry, that's the groundwater levels are higher than the stage in the river. And as such, there is contribution from the aquifer to the river. The middle one shows a losing stream where there's contribution from the river back to the aquifer because of the hydraulic gradients. Both of those are interconnected surface water. And both of those indicate the dynamic situations that we see along all three river boundaries. Uh, there's plenty of areas that are not only, I I think a lot of people tend to think of certain reaches as being gaining, gaining or certain reaches as being losing. In reality, there's a a lot of interaction and it happens seasonally and it happens uh very dynamically uh through all of our river basins. But what we want to avoid is when we get to the point where the groundwater system is substantially below the invert of the channel. And as a result of that, all you're doing is just inducing more and more recharge and depleting uh stream flow in the channel. So um, with that background, our historical water budget tells us that the Tuolumne and the San Joaquin Rivers have been net gaining over time on average, the entire reach has. And uh, the Merced River uh was actually a slightly net losing stream on average, but has been connected over the historical study period. The projected future modeling, again, recognizing that it's a fifty-year uh projection, suggests that over time, there's significant increases in stream flow depletion. Uh, more so in the Merced and the Tuolumne than the San Joaquin River. The um, the changes there appear to be very minor. Uh, but in particular, the Merced River could actually become disconnected. So we wanted to set our sustainable management criteria in a manner such that we would protect about that uh for that going forward. So um, in order to get to a better understanding of what groundwater extractions would do to the river over time, uh, we looked at the uh interaction between groundwater extraction and water level changes and then linked those water level changes back to uh actual estimates of volume of stream flow depletions. And so uh, by that method, we were able to use the metrics that are required by the regulations, which is sort of the quantity of the depletions and relate that back to groundwater levels uh in order to monitor that. And we're gonna talk a little bit about how we've done that for a lot of these indicators. And we think that in this manner, we can avoid projected future undesirable results. So with that as a backdrop, let's look at the approach that we've taken for our minimum thresholds in the Turlock Sub Basin. Here are our five applicable sustainability indicators. Seawater intrusion is not shown here. And I'm gonna pop in our table at the bottom of this slide that provides a little bit more information. So the first row of our table says GSP MT metric. What that means is that the GSP regulations uh actually require a specific metric be selected for the minimum threshold for each of these sustainability indicators. For example, for chronic lowering of water levels, the metric is groundwater levels. And so that's what we have chosen for our Turlock Sub Basin and that's what we're going to be monitoring in our uh GSP monitoring network. So everything looks uh exactly the same with respect to chronic lowering of water levels. But for reduction of groundwater and storage, the regulations say we need a volume. A volume of extractions that would result in no undesirable results in the sub-basin. Um, e- essentially the definition of a sustainable yield. And so um, we were able to think about uh using, and I'm gonna just put this uh note here, uh, using our sustainable yield modeling to correlate volumes of extractions back to groundwater levels so that we could use groundwater levels as a proxy. So that's what we've done. We've set groundwater levels as our minimum thresholds for reduction of groundwater and storage. And we will be using the same water level monitoring network that we use for chronic lowering of water levels for that sustainability indicator as well. So this, this just um, y- because we are able to uh uh um better understand uh both overdraft and declining water levels with this water level monitoring network. We sort of take two birds and one stone kind of approach with the sustainability indicators. The gradient water quality is a little different, as I mentioned before. Um, that that's really related more to the number of supply wells that might be impacted or contours of various um uh degraded water quality uh and all sort of considering water quality standards. So those are the metrics that the GSP regulations mention. And um, as I mentioned, we have uh identified constituents of concern in the sub-basin. And because those constituents of concern are primarily in areas where we already have water supply wells, we've set the MCL for drinking water. So we've gone to uh real, really the most rigorous standard there for our MT so that we can track and better understand any time that drinking water standards are being um are are not being met. And so uh, we will be uh, we we've set the MCLs um as MTs and we will be using other programs. I mentioned before that there are so many other water quality monitoring programs in the sub-basin. And so we have selected the monitoring programs that best fit the needs of the GSAs going forward to look at these constituents of concern. For inelastic land subsidence, the regulations say you need to look at rate and extent. Uh, we can do that, but our rates are so darn small that it's difficult to really know exactly what's going to uh relate back to an undesirable result. So it doesn't really help us that much with respect to uh incorporating some sort of a sustainable yield modeling. But what we can do, however, is note that if we don't have declining water levels and if we can keep and manage our sub-basin water levels close to or near the his- uh these historic low levels that we have just recently seen in the drought of record, then um, we can avoid mitigation. We can, we can, um, we can mitigate land subsidence. We can avoid a exacerbation of any land subsidence that may have been inadvertently triggered that we don't know about. Um, and that again is a way to use groundwater levels as a proxy and use our groundwater level network again for monitoring land subsidence. And then finally, with interconnected surface water, same story. The regulations uh tell you to look at the location, timing and quantity of depletions. Well, because we've done our sustainable yield modeling, we're able to associate those location, timing and quality back to groundwater levels. Um, we're looking at depletion of interconnected surface water uh associated with groundwater extractions. And groundwater extractions are the reason we have groundwater level decline. So it makes sense that those are very related. And as a result of that, we can use groundwater levels as a proxy in the groundwater level network. So you can see that of these five uh sustainability indicators, four of them are simply using groundwater levels. And I think this is a very um, a very uh sort of way to optimize and better understand the entire sub-basin through your water level monitoring network. This table uh shows a summary of the undesirable results and minimum thresholds that have been selected for each of the indicators. Please refer to the very long and in some cases quite wordy uh sustainable management criteria discussions in chapter six. There's a lot of regulations and there's a lot of detail that's required with respect to analyzing and developing the sustainable management criteria. So we have documented that in um chapter six. And uh, I just have it summarized here as a sort of cheat sheet to uh help you better understand what you would be looking for when you get into the kind of lengthy chapter. Uh, and you can see I've highlighted there fall two thousand and fifteen groundwater levels. We're setting those as minimum thresholds. And because we chose this, it it really has a lot of uh uh, it it really supports of all of these other sustainability indicators that we're using water levels as a proxy. For example, it was very close to um or near the historic lows that we've seen in in the basin. And as a result, would be protective against land subsidence. Uh, arresting those declines means we will uh automatically begin to uh address our reduction of groundwater and storage. And uh, again, keeping those water levels from going down will keep us from exacerbating an increase in stream flow depletion. Uh, in particular, because the Merced River was um, uh, was more of a losing river than the others. Uh, we were more aggressive there and with the help of uh those that were operating on the river. Um, Merced Irrigation District was very helpful with a lot of information and um observations and was a key in assisting us there for the selection of sustainable management criteria. So that's the summary table that you can look back at and um help you better uh see exactly how we've defined our undesirable results and how we've set minimum thresholds. Now I'd like to move to a hydrograph because sometimes I think that if we look at a hydrograph of water levels and we see these lines on the hydrograph, we can better understand uh what this means with respect to monitoring and going forward. So on this hydrograph, I've just selected that you can see. So on this hydrograph, I've just selected that you can see that the the red dot in the lower right location. Uh map on this slide shows where the well is. And you can see the water levels plotted through time, beginning in nineteen ninety and going uh all the way to twenty twenty, which is the most recent data that we've downloaded. Um you can see that the 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 hydrograph showing water levels in that well. And the ground surface elevation, just for reference, is shown there at the top. So you can see the black line is the groundwater level. I mean, the groundwater surface, uh ground surface, and then the groundwater levels in blue. So the MT, the minimum threshold is shown in orange and that's based on fall two thousand and fifteen data as we've just talked about. So that um orange line is is drawn to reflect the um water levels that occurred in that well in fall twenty fifteen. The measurable objective is set as the midpoint between the MT and the historical uh high water level. And the reason we did that is because a measurable objective is sort of where you want to be on average conditions. Well, if we're setting our low at the um near the historic low that we've already seen, then if we set our high our our high. Uh at the historic high, then the midpoint between those two is automatically um you know, sort of average conditions. And so that's um where the measurable objective occurs. Um I've had a couple of comments from the public uh asking, why is it that you have, you know, you set your MTs in the drought? Is that is that a good idea? Because um you know, that means that 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 those water levels were uh really at low levels. And actually, um you know, it 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 doesn't mean that we're operating the basin to always be at these drought conditions. Quite the contrary, we're actually operating the basin, using this MT as a floor. And that's what I've put on that third bullet, that MT is used as a management floor. So we're operating above that floor for the most part. Allowing for some short term exceedances to occur during drought, which is uh you you know, really hard to uh to to uh mitigate at any at any rate. And so um this and then there's subs- subsequent recovery, of course, required as well. So we think that that's a sort of um a reasonable way to go about uh controlling management in the sub basin. Uh moving to the monitoring network, um we've done this by principal aquifer. So this is in the western portion of the sub basin. We've identified the western principal aquifer as being above the corcoran clay. We talked about that at several. Uh other presentations. And in that um network, you can see the wells shown there by the dots on the map. We have a good distribution throughout the western upper principal aquifer. It's eighteen wells. Sixteen of them are existing cash gem wells. We have a nice uh historical water level record. There are two that are actually not drilled yet, but they are proposed. They are being funded under our proposition sixty eight grant that we have already. Uh obtained and we are moving forward with getting those wells in the ground as soon as possible. Um when you look at our maps in chapter seven, you'll always be able to identify those proposed wells by the sort of red and orange colors. And so you can see on this map, if you look on the map, there are two um uh sort of orange uh colors. And if you look in the legend, those are identified as the prop sixty eight wells. So those are the wells that we've not quite drilled yet. We've put MTs and MOs, the measure minimum thresholds and measurable objectives right on the maps. But you can see exactly what's being uh used for uh those sustainable management criteria for each one of those representative monitoring locations. And we've done that for all of the principal aquifers. I'll just go briefly through the uh other uh network maps. This one, remember how we are uh combining several of the sustainability indicators together? So see my three icons that I have on this map? Chronic lowering of water levels, reduction of groundwater and storage and land subsidence are all being managed by this map for the western upper principal aquifer. Moving to the western lower principal aquifer, this is the aquifer underneath the one we just looked at. So these are deeper wells below the corcoran clay. We don't quite have as many wells as we'd like. There are eight total. Uh four of these are really nice multi completion monitoring wells that the cities have drilled in particular. Uh the city of Turlock, the city of Series and De Niere County um uh services district have all um. In these nice multi completion monitoring wells. This is really helpful for uh hydro geological analysis of. How water levels are changing above and below the corcoran clay and would be very helpful with respect to analyzing the potential for uh land subsidence in the future. There's also a USGS well. Uh I don't ha- I we don't quite have access to that yet. That's the one that's right on the Merced River. You can see that it's. Um just down there in blue. And um we we really want to be able to get to that. The the uh GSA member agencies have contacted a USGS. Um and have worked with a variety of folks. We have a lot of people retiring at USGS and so it's kind of difficult to get uh some some coordination going. But we are working very uh hard at getting access to that well. That well is also going to be um helpful as we go forward with interconnected surface water, if we can get access to that well, because there are other wells in that area. Um that we can incorporate as well. So um again, additional future wells planned for the western lower principal aquifer. For the eastern principal aquifer, the eastern like sub basin GSA has done an excellent job at uh expanding their uh previous monitoring network. And have added a lot of uh wells in very key locations. There's twenty one wells total. It's a mix of cash gem wells. We have a city multi completion well. Um and then two wells that are planned for the proposition sixty eight and three new wells that are also planned. That's for the uh Department of Water Resources has a technical services support, support services program. And um they're going to install three new wells for us uh as part of that program. Um moving now to the water quality network, this is different. Remember how we're not uh installing our own wells here because look how many there are already. Uh we want to make best use of existing data uh ready for downloading. Um and here are just the numbers of wells, just to demonstrate that we have a really good um monitoring network, very robust with respect to each of our constituents of concern. Um you can see that there's a lot of wells that are focused in the central and western portions of the sub basin. And that makes sense because that's really where most of the water supply wells are in the sub basin. So we we have uh as I pointed out before, we have really gone for um looking at water quality with respect to drinking water standards and MCLs. So it makes sense to focus most of our monitoring efforts in areas where the drinking water supply wells are located. So that is our water quality system. The wells will change for the water quality monitoring network. It's a little bit different than the other networks. Um that they will probably change from time to time based on the division of drinking water requirements of public water suppliers for. Uh reporting certain water quality constituents over time. But we don't expect those changes to be significant. Um they're usually within a well field and or or with other nearby wells. So we anticipate being able to have these numbers, uh general numbers of wells going forward, which will really improve our understanding of water quality in the sub basin. And then finally, we're at the last one, interconnected surface water. Um uh we have six wells along the Merced River, only three along the Tuolumne and only three along the San Joaquin. Um they they're not near as many as we would like. Uh we anticipate that we will focus on the river boundaries for our additional monitoring network wells. Um our data gaps are not only locations. We'd like to have wells closer to the river um in some cases than we do. The um wells along the Merced River are actually located quite close and they are. Uh you know, a little bit better wells. And then we do have a series well up on the Tuolumne that's right on the river. So that is very helpful to get that well into the network. But you can see those yellow dots along the San Joaquin River are really quite far away. And so we'd like to have some of those wells closer to the rivers. Um we also have the Modesto Sub Basin to the north that has been installing uh wells on their side of the river. So we're going to be coordinating with them along with Delta Mendota to the west on the um. On their monitoring network so that we can get it, which it would be really nice from a hydro geological standpoint to have pairs of shallow wells uh on both sides of the river. That would give us a a better understanding of hydraulic gradients and flow from one sub basin to another. And then finally, for the monitoring network, we have what we are calling sigma wells. Um if you count it up.
Having trouble getting wells on the Tuolumne.
I'm sorry, we are. You're right. We we do have uh several wells on the Tuolumne. There's actually three. Um but um in in on this map, we have more than that. We have um a fifty two um sigma wells, we're calling them. It 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 thi- this is just a a coincidence. This has nothing to do with what we tried to do, but it just so happens that there are fifty two representative monitoring wells. And there are also fifty two sigma wells. Um that that wasn't by design. We didn't just say, hey, we've got, you know, hundred and four wells. Let's just use half. It was, it wasn't that way at all. It was just uh something that worked out. But um when when you see the sigma wells that are uh dots on these maps, uh you won't be able to count fifty two. And that's because we are including uh many of the multi completion and cluster wells that have been drilled in the sub basin. So one dot might be more than one well. And we are using the well at that location that most represents water levels in that principal aquifer. But how nice to have other uh water level measurements uh in the vertical direction. So that we can really understand vertical hydraulic gradients. So I think the monitoring program is robust. I think there are some data gaps, but the GSAs are committed to filling them. In fact, in addition to the TSS wells that are going in and the prop sixty eight wells that are going in. My understanding is that uh even more wells have already been budgeted for the next fiscal year. So um with that, I'd like to move to our last uh sustainable management criteria. We're jumping back to chapter six for just a second. Um and I want to just say something about interim milestones. So sigma recognizes that you're not going to be able to start all of your projects on day one. You've put your plan together. You've come up with how you would like to see projects implemented along with your management actions. And you have an opportunity to take some time to get all of this in place. You know, often it in it it involves either additional infrastructure, additional permitting. Uh we know that the sequel process can take quite a bit of time and we've already started that. But in the interim, um water levels that are declining in certain areas may continue to decline. And so I've just shown by the arrow there that sigma allows for the GSAs to note. That we will not have projects in place on day one. And during the first five years, while we get projects in place and get projects and get water into the ground. And then that will take some time for the aquifers to respond. Uh during that time, we may see additional declines. And from a sustainable management criteria perspective, that's not ideal, but it's allowed because it is um uh recognized that it's going to be necessary. And so what the regulations say is that um it, you know, if if this is your situation where you have areas of declining water levels that are going to continue to decline for some time. Then if you anticipate a glide path. Um which means you you note that you will be continuing to decline during your first five years, but that you will recover after that. And finally, get back up to where you would like to be, your measurable objective in this case. Um then then that's okay. And so as a result of that, we do have areas that are already uh either close to or below the minimum thresholds. And we recognize that those uh areas, uh while we're going to target them and we're going to do our best. We can't predict what's going to happen with the hydrology over the next five years. And if this drought continues over the next five years, I hope it doesn't. I know we all do, but um. Uh we 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 just can't be sure. And so as a result of that, we have planned for a glide path that anticipates. That water levels will need to continue to decline. So as a result of that, we have set interim milestone number one, which is targeting twenty twenty seven. Um uh for uh uh minimum thresholds below the MT, below the um uh for water levels below the MTs. So that's um what that arrow is supposed to indicate. And again, it allows for additional declines while projects come online. And so here's what that looks like on a hydrograph, just to just as an example. You can see the red dot again on the small location map. And you can see the water levels for this well that has been continuing to decline over time. And I think you can see that even though there's been some recovery uh recently, uh and we're beginning to sort of hover around the minimum threshold. It still is unlikely that we would be able to hold the minimum threshold if we have four more years of drought. And as a result of that, um even though projects in this area are moving uh forward as quick as they as they can. Um we need to anticipate that that we may need a glide path uh for some of our areas. And so as a result of that, we have shown a glide path by an interim milestone for twenty twenty seven. That is the blue line on this hydrograph. And so what you can see with that blue line is that we took a a reasonable um decline. That went into the most recent drought and and lasted from twenty thirteen to fall twenty twenty. And we said, if we have those conditions again, then we will put that decline on the end of our um twenty twenty water levels. And we will see where that lands us. And so that allows for an interim milestone to be set fourteen and a half feet below where we are now. And nineteen feet below the minimum threshold. So that's how that works and I hope that that will be clear. Um the interim milestone section is described at the end of chapter six. And then you can see the uh interim milestone lines on the hydrographs. And the hydrographs for all of these wells, by the way, are being uh provided with chapter seven. They're going to be an appendix in the uh GSP. But we knew that when you reviewed chapter seven, you'd also like to see those hydrographs. So that's a lot of the technical information. Just a couple more slides to wrap some of this up. I always want to say something about adaptive management because we go through the planning process, we evaluate everything, we make our best judgments. We begin implementation and we will begin to really learn about implementation. I believe at this point that this GSP provides really reasonable estimates for sustainable management criteria based on our available data. But it is quite aggressive with respect to being protected. So we want to, you know, set ourselves up to make sure that we avoid undesirable results. But it is also recognized that this GSP applies all of these new concepts to this sub basin for the very first time. It quantifies management of water levels to the nearest foot. You have to set an MT at a foot, you know, at 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 some elevation. And so um if you think about having to manage to a foot and in areas where you have uh long screened wells and pumping conditions. Uh you know, that can get challenging. So uh we've set it up. We recognize that. Um and so we've set things up to allow for more than one well. To indicate that the aquifer is uh declining in a certain area. And um we've we've got the basis for that documented in our chapter number six. Uh we also recognize that the GSP contains imperfect monitoring networks, even though they have really been improved over the last three years while we've been doing this GSP. We we need more improvements and that will occur over time. And then finally, the GSP selects criteria based on modeling projections that go out fifty years. So that tells you right there that there's some uncertainty associated with it and we need to recognize that going forward. Uh the conditions are going to be analyzed in annual reports and the criteria can be that reevaluated in the five year GSP assessment. And I think all of the GSPs in California will need to rely on these concepts of adaptive management. In that you are going to learn from what you're doing in the field. That's going to uh inform what you, what your next steps are going to be. And then you will learn from those next steps and so on and so forth. And this isn't just my little phrase, build on what you know and adjust as you go. So there's my pitch for adaptive management going forward. And then finally, a couple of of final slides. Um the GSP chapters and public comments um forms are on the website at turlockgroundwater dot work slash GSP. There are three ways that you can submit comments on these chapters. Uh you can certainly do it by US mail. We take letters. Uh but you can also do it through email on the website as well as there are electronic forms uh right on the website. So whichever is easiest for anyone to make comments, any anyone can 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 do that and we welcome all comments. Um we've had some very helpful comments today. Uh comments on chapter six and seven has a thirty day review process. Uh and we'll be accepting comments on those through November nineteenth so that I can spend my Thanksgiving. so that I can spend my Thanksgiving week getting your comments into the GSP. I'm just kidding. Okay, so and then finally, we have a schedule. You've seen this before and the, the green stars is what I'm focusing on. These are the releasing of the draft chapters as we go. So we, we had our first three chapters came before you in July. And then we had our water budgets chapter. That was running a little bit late, but we finally got that done at the end of August. And so that was really most of the technical analysis for the document, the water budgets and those early chapters on the basin setting is really where all of the hydro geological medias that is used to base the sustainable management criteria and the monitoring networks on. So here we are at the red bar there for sustainable management criteria and monitoring networks. And the next two chapters that we talked about previously, projects and management actions, which is sort of the last piece of the plan itself. And then the outreach and communication section, which Herb has been great at pulling all of this incredibly disparate information all together in one place and really laying it out in a coherent fashion so that I think you'll be able to see sort of how we got to where we are right now. The technical background chapters were done. The sustainable management criteria and monitoring networks are hopefully in front of you today. Pending any additional questions that the board may have. Final, final chapters coming early to mid-November. The entire document, document will be assembled with your comments incorporated after that along with all of the data templates and references. And we anticipate asking the GSAs for adoption with the required to submit by the end of January twenty twenty. But that's it for me and be happy to take any questions that anybody has and provide any other information. Thanks very much for staying in there with me.
Thank you, Phyllis. Very informative questions, comments for Phyllis.
It looks like we might have one hand raised. Looks like Amanda from Leadership Council has a question. Amanda, if you want to unmute yourself, go ahead and ask.
Great, thanks Herb and thanks Phyllis, as always, for your very clear explanation of everything. Really appreciate you taking the time to go through everything so clearly. I had a couple clarifying questions about the minimum thresholds and undesirable results for water quality and groundwater levels, given that those are the sustainability indicators which could impact folks that we work with in the sub basin. And I guess I, I don't want to take too much time because I know there's a lot of people on this call and it's already six o'clock. So is there going to be another opportunity to ask further questions?
Um, well, we, we do have regular tech meetings that you've attended and so we're happy to have them there. Do you have something just very quickly that you could, that I could address quickly? Or is it, is it too involved to do it this time?
I'm a little worried it might get a little into, too into the weeds. But I think I wanted to generally say that we're, the, the fact that the minimum thresholds for groundwater levels is at the fall twenty fifteen levels is good. And appreciate that that's where the GSA is trying to set levels as that will more, more reliably lead to groundwater, drinking water protection for folks that we work with.
Yes, I agree, I think so.
On, on the water quality, on the water quality minimum threshold, though, clarifying question for the MCA, it says the minimum threshold is the MCL of the six contaminants of concern. And I'm wondering, what if the MCL has already been violated? Will it just, will the GSA try to keep, keep it there? Or what?
Yes, yes, and Amanda, I, I understand the question completely. And it, it's clarified in the chapter and I, I didn't get into the, the weeds of some of the details in this presentation. But we have taken, I think you'll be pleased that we have taken a very, very protective approach. We are looking and, and have agreed to track and analyze water quality that exceeds an MT in a, for a first time exceedance. And we have also set our measurable objective to be the maximum concentration that has been seen in those wells. So we will be looking for both. We will be looking for sort of new wells getting hit for the first time. And we will also be looking at wells increasing concentrations over time. And rather than try to come up with a reasonable percentage or number of wells, recognizing that the water quality network might actually, you know, vary a bit from year to year. We have, again, taken that very protective process of saying, if we have one well, that's going to be tracked and analyzed as to how it relates back to GSA management of levels and extractions. And that's going to be documented in the annual report. We also anticipate close coordination with so many of the other water quality concerns in the sub basin. You know, our member agencies are all of the public water suppliers. So we have their, their interests already front and center from, from them. And then we also are coordinating very closely with the water quality coalitions. In particular, many of our member agencies, many people on this call, in fact, are very active with respect to the water quality coalitions for the Nitrate Control Program, Irrigated Lands Program, CV Salts, et cetera. And so we are, we, you know, I, I feel that the GSAs have, have really stepped up here and said, you know, we're going to be looking at water quality in a very detailed manner. So the, the, the question that you talked about with respect to degradation is, is handled with our measurable objective. And that's, that's what we want to be able to hold the line here and not see additional exceedances.
Okay, thank you. And one last thing, I did want to raise one concern about the undesirable results for groundwater levels. We are worried that if, I think I'm a little, I, I'll get, when we look at the chapter, I'll look at what the adverse impacts means. But if we're only looking at those over multiple years of drought, that could lead to many, many wells already having gone dry by, by then.
Yes, and you'll be very pleased to learn that the GSAs are crafting a well mitigation program now to come up with ways to address the issues. So and, and I'll just tell you now, and you can, you can read it when you get the chapter. The way that we have put the exceedances together is that we are looking for a minimum threshold exceedance for three consecutive fall years. So it, you know, this company, you know, the, the, the increase over the spring doesn't kind of get you off the hook, so to speak. If you have three consecutive fall years for thirty percent, a third of the wells, then that's undesirable results. So I think that's very protective and so I'm glad that the GSAs are, are going in that direction.
Okay, thanks for that explanation, Phyllis. Appreciate it.
You bet, thank you. Any other questions that anybody has? I don't have a way of looking at the hand raising from here. I can see, everything I can see is the chat. Herb, do you see any other hands?
No, Phyllis, I was just looking. I don't see any hands raised, but if anyone has any other questions for Phyllis, now would be the great time.
And in particular, if any of the board members have anything that you are concerned about or you'd like to ask a question on, you know, you're getting ready to review a lot of pages. And sometimes, you know, it kind of helps just to think about how it's organized. So anyway, please, please feel free to reach out to us if you, if you need additional information.
Well, here are no more questions. Wes Turlock, be willing to entertain a motion to go ahead and release chapters six and seven. Unless somebody wants to separate those two motions, but we can take it as one motion if you'd like.
So moved, Juritzma?
I'll wait a second. Maldonado?
So is it probably moving second to release chapter six and chapter seven? Is there any further discussion, questions, concerns? Here none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same sign? Here no opposition, I move that motion passed.
Okay, this is Director Pereira and I am willing to do the same on the Easter Lock Sub Basin to approve chapter six and seven being released for public review and comment. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll, I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Hasham. Is there a second?
Walt Ward, second.
Okay, any further comment? Is there any public comment? Ms. Johnson, would you please call the roll?
Absolutely. Director Alrich?
Yes.
Thank you. Director Atal?
Aye.
Thank you. Director Ward?
Yes.
Thank you. And Vice Chair Pereira?
Yes.
Thank you. unanimous motion passed.
All right, thank you. Motion passed unanimously.
This time, I think that moves us on to agenda item G, comments from the board. I don't hear any from the West Turlock.
Any from the East? Hearing none from the East, I will adjourn the East Turlock portion of this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Lloyd. In the West, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session. We have one item, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation.
If no one wants to do it, Joe, I'll do it.
Thank you, is there a second?
Seconded.
Thinking your calls have probably moved and seconded. Any further discussion or comments? Here none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes, we are adjourned to closed session. Herb, how do you want to facilitate this?
Yeah, Chair Alamo, I'm just looking real quick. I just want to make sure I have everybody in there that needs to be in there. So for the Westerlock Sub Basin, closed session, I, I have Director Silveira, Juritzma, Odom, and then staff, you know, Debbie Multibono, Jennifer Land, Chair Alamo, Karen Morgan, Director Buck, Director Maldonado, Michael Cook, Director Alvarez, Director Larson, General Counsel Valerie Kincaid, and Director Chiesa. Is there anybody else on the call that I'm missing? Either because they're called via phone and I can't recognize them or I haven't called their name that needs to go in that closed session? Feel free and let me know and I'll find a way to get you in there. But it looks like I think I have everybody and I checked with the others via chat to see if, if they were needed. And it looks like we're good. So everybody that I have listed here, I'm going to shoot on over into the closed session and we will go through there. So sit tight, you should be there in a second. Go ahead and click accept when you get a notification on your screen.
Hello, Herb, we're back in the main room.
Yes, we are.
Sounds great. I'd like to report out there was no action taken in closed session. And with that, I declare the meeting adjourned.